I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all for coming again tonight. It's good to see you here. Adoption of agenda for regular meeting. Under provisions of the public meeting law of the state of Missouri, the board must adopt by roll call vote an agenda that includes a time, date, place, and tentative agenda for the meeting. A copy of the notice and agenda for this meeting was posted on Friday, December 6, 2013, at the Administration Center, 1005 Waterford Drive, Florissant, Missouri. At the same time, copies of the notice and the agenda were mailed to major radio and television stations, to four newspapers, and to all municipalities, schools in the district, and posted on the district website. Need a motion to adopt the agenda for regular meeting?
Still move.
Second.
Been moved by Mrs. Hogshead and seconded by Mr. Ebert. Mr. Chabot?
Mr. Eber, Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Schrader?
Aye.
Mrs. Hogshead?
Aye.
Secretary votes aye, Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
And Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Adoption of agenda for executive session. Section 610.021 of Missouri law provides for discussion of certain agenda items in closed meeting. Notice of the proposed closed meeting, including the agenda items to be discussed, was posted. The board by roll call vote must authorize holding the closed meeting and approve the proposed agenda by reference to each subject to be discussed. The agenda for the closed meeting is personnel, section 610.021.3, and legal, 610.021.1. Mr., any a motion to accept the executive session, agenda for executive session?
Still move.
Second.
Been moved by Mrs. Hogshead and seconded by Mr. Ebert. Mr. Chabot?
Mr. Ebert?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Schrader?
Aye.
Mrs. Hogshead?
Aye.
Secretary votes aye, Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
And Mr. Morris? You say aye?
Did he say aye?
Aye.
No, Mr. Morris, did he say aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Next we have some recognitions. We have Mr. Martinez, would you read those for us?
So are we at number four? All right, item number four. Six McClure South Berkeley seniors are eligible to receive a $500,000 in scholarships through Infinite Scholars Program. To present, Mrs. Betty Fagan, Mrs. Judy Ferguson Shaw, and Mr. Kofi. And our six McClure South Berkeley seniors were awarded nearly $500,000 in combined scholarships through the Infinite Scholars Program. The students are Raneya Harvey, Dasha Khushan, Sean Caldwell, Savoy Smith, Ariel Welsh, and Duane Jenkins. The students attended the Infinite Scholars Program College and University Fair on September 7th, where they presented transcripts, letters of recommendation, and essays on the importance of higher education to representatives of colleges and universities. These students were selected to receive scholarships to be paid upon the student's enrollment in any of the awarding colleges or universities. Are students with us tonight or no?
She's with us. She's with us. She's with us.
There you go. And as like all great students, they're very involved, so between band and a wrestling competition, unfortunately, they can't be here tonight, but even though they're not here, let's give them a round of applause. Item number five, McClure senior receives Gateway Classic Earl Wilson Jr. Scholarship. Mr. Gary Spiller, are you in the house?
Yes.
Would you like, please?
Yes. If I can get Alexis Barnes and her family to step right up front with Mr. Morris. McClure High School senior Alexis Barnes won the Gateway Classic Earl Wilson Jr. General Scholarship, a renewable, four-year, $40,000 scholarship which covers tuition, room, and board at any historically black college or university of her choice. Ms. Barnes was awarded the scholarship at the Edward Jones Dome in a halftime presentation at the Gateway Classic football game on September 28th. Ms. Barnes has been accepted to Kansas University, Tuskegee, Lincoln University, and SIU Elwesville. She plans to attend either Xavier Louisiana or Florida A&amp;M University. She is a driven and accomplished student with a 4.0 grade point average. She's involved in basketball, volleyball, DECA, FBLA, yearbook, and student government. Ms. Barnes has also volunteered in the community with the Fatherhood Support Center, the Missouri Black Expo, and in numerous cancer awareness and fundraising walks. Please help me congratulate Alexis Barnes and her parents.
This portion of the meeting is allocated to the board to provide an update of current activities and events in the district that may be of special interest to the board members and the community. Mr. Ebert?
Monday, there you go. Monday night, I went to the SSD Governing Council, and they gave a presentation on trying to improve their information systems and connect them with the partnering school districts to try to eliminate some of the redundancy and at the same time better serve our students. To get their main goal, like I've been on the committees in our district for SSD, again, the main goal is the students and trying to coordinate better between the SSD teachers and the main, the classroom teachers. So they're going to start contacting all the districts and trying to see by law what they can share and what they can't, so that when a student has a need, it can be expedited just tremendously. So I thought that was an awesome thing to mention to everybody. It can only help, and having a son with special needs, I understand. I've been in many meetings where the SSD teacher and the classroom teacher are like, well, is that something I teach or is that something I, you know, I should do, or is it the classroom teacher and things like that? So hopefully, this will help everyone. So that's all I have.
Mr. Brown?
Well, it's very good to see all of you out tonight. Tonight, I'm going to pass on any comments, and so we just move on.
Mr. Schrader?
I'd like to talk about two meetings that I attended recently. Friday and Saturday, I was in Columbia at the Missouri Council of Teachers with Mathematics Annual Conference at no cost to the district. And there was a lot of work on common core and key skills, the new tests that will be coming down in a year and a half that all of our students will be facing. And I'm glad to say that Kevin Vopel, our mathematics coordinator, was there. He's very well informed and on top of all the changes that are coming that he'll be sharing with our teachers and helping our teachers make sure our students are prepared for those new tests. The second meeting I attended was yesterday morning. The A-plus Advisory Committee meets annually to go through over the A-plus program. And particularly with a lot of parents in here, I think I would really like to urge you, particularly if you have students in middle school grades, to really focus on the A-plus program. If you're not familiar with that program, it provides two years free tuition to any junior college or a couple of technical schools, Rankin, Arlen Tech, and the state of Missouri. It's hard to beat freeze college. The thing, reason I say we, students, should sign up early, one of the difficulties we've had is students often wait until their senior year to think about that program. And the difficulties with that is number one, you need to maintain a 2.5 grade point average, so you need a C-plus average and an A-plus average to qualify. But you also need 95% attendance. You have to have no type-one behaviors on your discipline records. You need to have a good discipline record. And as a retired math teacher, you also have to score proficient or advanced on the Algebra I and of course exam. The 50 hours of tutoring is what you can start on early if you sign up early. The A-plus coordinator will help organize that for you, so you get that requirement out of the way. So I'd really encourage parents, I know the students hear about this a lot at school, I don't know how much the parents hear about, this great program of two years of free college education or two free years at a technical school in Missouri. You're already paying your taxes as a state of Missouri, you might as well reap one of the great benefits.
Mrs. Hogshead?
I would just like to take this opportunity to wish everybody a very, very Merry Christmas, but also a very blessed Christmas and holiday season.
Mr. Chabot?
Pretty quiet. I did go to the McClure Winter Concert last night, and it was absolutely fabulous to see so much talent within our school district. Beyond that, I wish everybody happy holidays and Merry Christmas as well.
Mr. Martinez?
Well, unfortunately, the comments that I'm going to make aren't quite as pleasant. About a week ago or so, our community lost a really great community member, Mr. Gary Bellman. Some of you may know him. He's the person who started an organization called Accessible Play. Accessible Play is working to build a playground that's universally accessible here in Florissant. It would be the first one certainly in the area, and the organization is continuing. But Mr. Bellman did lose his fight to cancer just about a week or so ago. And so I just wanted to make sure that we're remembering his life, his cause, as all of us can stay involved, because that's the kind of, that's the kind of influx of energy that our area can certainly use, and all of our students could certainly use that. Secondly, on December 14th, 2012, we first heard the words Sandy Hook Elementary. And I just want to remind you that it doesn't feel like it's been a year, but we are approaching that anniversary. And I want to commend all of the folks at our district who worked very hard to keep our children safe, but I also want us to remember what gun violence can mean in our And for the third comment, I have a quote, and then I'll finish up. "I have fought against white domination, and I have fought against black domination. I have cherished the ideal of a democratic and free society in which all persons will live together in harmony. It is an ideal for which I hope to live for and to see realized. But my Lord, if it needs be, it is an ideal for which I am prepared to die." So these are the words of Nelson Mandela. And this week, the world lost a true leader, a true role model. So at this time, Mr. President, if I may, I'd like to request a moment of silence for the families of Sandy Hook, the community who lost Mr. Bellman, to mourn the loss, but more importantly, consider the life of Mandela, Nelson Mandela, who not only refused to hate, but calls us to do the same. Quick moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez, for those words. Tonight is, again, we're back here at North. We were anticipating a large crowd, and not as large as last time, and that's fine. Still, this would have been a very packed house next door, so we decided to move it over here to make it comfortable and accessible for everybody. We've also made some adjustments to the standard board meeting. We have extended the audience participation at the end of the meeting to 30 minutes, doubled the time for those who might want to speak. But we do have a lot of business, some of the business we didn't get done last month, we need to get done this month, and we have some presentations that I look forward to seeing. Look forward to seeing particularly our strategic plan and where we're going with that. And the next thing is audience participation. Board allocates this portion of the meeting for audience participation regarding items listed on tonight's agenda. Members of the audience who wish to speak to the board or request to speak from the podium identify themselves and limit their remarks to three minutes. In keeping with District Policies 4054 and 4059 and Personnel Law, speakers should refrain from making negative comments that are personally identifiable. According to policy, the board will not respond to public comments. Time is allocated at the end of the public session for suggestions and/or questions from the audience on other subjects, not on tonight's agenda. When you come up to speak tonight, please identify agenda item eight through 15 that you would like to address. Mr. Clark?
I'm Jim Clark, and I'd like to address the item that deals with the strategic plan. In the website, the district has various areas of focus. First one that's identified is student achievement. And the board goal is to provide the educational foundation and opportunities to ensure that all our students achieve at least a year's growth and meet personal, academic, and career goals. Second one identified is highly qualified staff. And there, the board goal is to ensure the district recruits, develops, and retains a diverse staff, helping to achieve even higher expectations for our district. Third area was community collaboration, and it's to enhance collaboration with students, parents, and community, and all the staff to ensure civic responsibility and an appreciation for diversity of life. Next area was highly qualified staff. There, you're to ensure that the district recruits, develops, and retains a diverse staff, helping to achieve even higher expectations for our district. Another area is community collaboration, enhance collaboration with students, parents, and community, and all the staff to ensure civic responsibility and appreciation for diversity in life. Another area was financial operations and instructional resources. There, you're going to ensure fiscal stability and ensure reserves through sound practices. I question whether you're doing that. Another item under that focus area is to incorporate green initiatives through educating staff, students, and parents on technology and best practices throughout the district. And another area was board governance that was a focus area. There, you're going to provide professional development to ensure that leadership that benefits students, staff, and patrons of the district. I wonder if you've done the last one at all. I question that. Thank you.
My name is Alfred Long Senior, and I'm a member of the Citizens Task Force on Excellence in Education. And I'd also like to address item number 13, Strategic Plan Update. And we would like to know why, after following protocol for having a voice on the agenda of this meeting, we were denied even after we gave notice 14 days beforehand. And to me, that says not only are you refusing to speak openly about the issues that are affecting the community and our kids, but it's an attempt to silence any voice that is in opposition to your actions. My children graduated from the Ferguson, Florissant School District, and I presently have many nieces and nephews currently enrolled in Ferguson, Florissant schools. And I want to first say that I'm saddened and I'm angered at the total disregard, disrespect, and flat-out condescending arrogance towards this community by allowing the situation with Dr. McCoy to drag on without any apparent solution in sight. And now, in the spirit of Mr. Martinez and your words about Dr. Mandela, I won't, I mean, I won't paint anybody-
Martinez.
With a Martinez.
It's pronounced Martinez.
I'm sorry, Martinez.
Not at all.
I won't paint anybody with a broad brush of racism, and I won't attempt to judge anybody because I don't know you or anybody on the board. But the actions of the board affect all the children of this district. However, to refuse to put closure to this matter shows a total disregard for the children that you claim to care about and represent. My question is, where is the professionalism? What is your real agenda? Any successful corporation operates with a system of candidness and openness, and I haven't seen that here. Most of your real meetings are behind closed doors, closed to the public. Another question is, what are you hiding? Is it about saving face? The best way to do that at this juncture is to admit you made a mistake and move out the way so someone who really cares about these kids can move in. Most of you are successful business people and wouldn't lose much by resigning. However, these kids have their whole lives ahead of them, and you're holding them hostage, not to mention the money you're wasting in a district that is far from financially solvent. I ask that you do some, I ask that you do some soul searching over the holidays and do the right thing for these kids.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the agenda item this evening?
Hello, my name is Nicole Logan. I'm a resident of the district. My child is currently enrolled in private school. My question is directly related to agenda item number 13, Strategic Plan Update. What are your plans for an interim superintendent before the board gets voted out in April? Is there no answer? Or will that be addressed during 13? Oh, they can't respond? Okay, thank you.
Well, I'm going to go ahead, but I'm actually responding to number 16, I think. My name is Amelia Schultz, and actually, I can answer that. Dr. Larry LaRue is our acting superintendent currently, so I'll make that, I can answer that question. I actually wanted to propose, and so I said mine is actually on 16, after the melee of our last meeting, I'd like to propose that a new rule or code be passed, that people from outside of our school district not be allowed to speak at board meetings without prior approval from the board. Most of the people from outside our school district who spoke at last month's meeting were there to incite people and fire their emotions. This was not helpful to an already emotionally charged atmosphere. If it is deemed a First Amendment right that people, anybody be allowed to speak, then I would like to propose that the board make a ruling that people outside our district be required to wait until all people from within our district have spoken. This way, the people who actually have a stake in the school district can have their say first, and if there is time remaining, people outside the school district can speak. And in addition to that, I find it disturbing that our former superintendent, or the Dr. R. McCoy, has a child who doesn't actually go to our school district, and that he has a home that he doesn't actually live in, in our school district. And that tends to make me look and say, what is his investment in our school district if he's not willing to send his own child to our schools? I happen to know several of the board members who have school-aged children have them in Ferguson, Florissant schools. I'm sorry, you can respond later. In conclusion, I'm, I actually expected there to be a lot of people here tonight. You know, if you're really interested in your child's education, you should be involved in your child's education. I'm on the PTG at McClure North. We are lucky to have five parents here every night, every month. If you are truly interested, then I would say spend more time with your child than with this issue. Thank you.
This will be our last speaker on this section.
Good evening. My name is Licorcia Cox, and I would like to bring up item number 13, which is in reference to the Strategic Plan Update. I have a couple of questions, and I realize that you can't answer them, but in reference to the strategic plan, we received a survey about a month ago. I might be a little bit inaccurate on the timing, but I noticed that the survey was in format of Survey Monkey. I utilize this tool all the time because I work in nonprofit management, and I realize that it's valuable. But my question was that it was sent via email. I'm a district parent, my children go to the school, and if you really want the feedback of the individuals and constituents in your community in terms of your staff and your parents, why was it only sent in email format? I just felt like if you really wanted the community's response, I felt it should be handed out in the schools, and there should have been incentives for parents to get it back out to you. I didn't see that happening in the schools, and that was my question to you. Why was that not done? I do this all the time in community needs assessment in my area of work, and it's just common practice and good practice is just to do that so you can get great feedback. Also, I wanted to know in terms of, you know, the needs and the demographics of the community, if there's internet access, usually people of poorer incomes and low incomes have internet access due their, via their, on their telephone. And it was really hard to type in a lot of the information, and it was very long and inaccessible for the survey and the format of the survey. I also would like for you to consider the educational level of the individuals that were actually contributing to the survey. I received the survey via my husband, the district has my email address, and I've never received a copy of the survey. So my next question to you is, was it only sent to a household or was it only just sent to individuals? I just really want it to be a more inclusive process, where was there also a focus group that included parents and community members or maybe students who can provide feedback in terms of strategic planning? And also, our leader is not in place in terms of the superintendent. We do have an acting superintendent, which I'm fully aware of that, but it seems hard to implement a strategic plan without consistent leadership in place. So my questions are, what are your plans for that, to carry out the duration of a strategic plan? Because that's very important and vital to a great strategic plan and implementing the process. Thank you so much, and have a great day.
Thank you. Agenda item number eight, Consent Agenda. The administration presents the following items for approval under Consent Agenda. Mr. Chabot, will you read the dispersments?
Payroll, teacher and non-teacher, $8,107,384.21. Operational dispersments of $2,532,954.93, for a total of $10,640,339.14.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Been moved by Mrs. Hogshead and seconded by Mr. Ebert to accept the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion passes. Next, we have Building Level Progress. Nicole Weitzel.
The three middle school principals will share unique programs that contribute to the overall success of their school this evening. In additionally, a PowerPoint of their strategic area focus plan update was also shared with the Board of Education. We will start with the principal of Berkeley Middle School, Mr. Steve Lawler.
Good evening. What I'm going to share with you today is our Project Dream Big. It's an activity that we've done for the last seven years, and it's really important to Berkeley Middle, so I'm going to have a few video clips that we're going to work on. But I would, just want you to know that the, the day is based on the book, We Beat the Street. It's a story about three doctors, how they overcame adversity to, to become successful. And so that's a, obviously, a motivational thing for our students. So, go ahead.
It's called Project Dream Big. This is our seventh annual event at Berkeley Middle School, and it's related to a novel we read in Communication Arts called We Beat the Street. Originally, the title of this event was called Operation Beat the Street, and we changed the name last year to be more positive. The B.I.G. stands for Be Self-Motivated, Inspire Others, and Get Involved, and those are basic premises from the three gentlemen in the novel who grew up in the projects in New Jersey and made a pact to become doctors. And they are motivational speakers and doctors, and they believe in not letting your circumstances be an excuse, and also that you should put yourself in the company of other people going in the same direction as you, and when you are successful, you have an obligation to give back to your community. So that's what today is about. We bring in guest speakers from the community and area businesses to talk to the kids about difficulties they faced, things they wish they would have done differently, community service they do. The kids have a special lunch. Right now, they're in the gym, doing closing activities and choosing a person in each of their groups to win prizes. So it's a really great day that we take the whole day to work on.
So one of the things that we do is we invite community members in to come talk to our students. They're from various jobs, professions, and what we ask them to do is share in their lives how they've overcome adversity. They, we all give them, we give them a copy of the book, so they read it before they come, and they make the connections for our kids to the book. We think it's really important, when you read things, that you write about it, you think about it, and then tie it into your real life. So the next clip will be a few of our guest speakers doing their presentations. They share their stories, like I said, mostly how they overcame adversity. So they want to inspire kids, but they also just want to open up the world to them. We have various people from different professions that kids may not have heard from or about, and so it's just a, a way to get them some more knowledge.[846.75][846.75](MUSIC PLAYING)
My name's Dr. Ed Ketcher, and I'm a retired school superintendent. Ed Ketcher, like a baseball catcher, only okay. And the interesting part of my story is, although I'm a school superintendent and I have four college degrees, I was a kid in a lot of trouble when I was young, and I was actually expelled from high school. I didn't go to high school, and I was in a lot of trouble. So my life is really kind of different.
So like I said, we have, we have preachers, we have musicians. It's really neat to watch the kids because we bring all genres of music in, and so there'll be a folk music player, or a jazz player, and a, a person who does rap, and the kids gravitate to all of them because music is that universal language. So the kids really enjoy seeing people, and they, it's not very nice to say aloud, but they don't always want to hear from educators, they want to hear from people out in the real world, they call it. So they enjoy seeing people from different professions. We also have a keynote speaker. Last year, we were lucky enough to have Aeneas Williams, the former Ramsville player who does wonderful things within our district. So you want to hit that next.
Because if you're, if you're trying to raise a family, you have to work weekends, holidays, some departments work three shifts, so you have to be on day shift, afternoon shift, and midnight shift, where you rotate. So it's pretty stressful on a family.
Serve others. Don't just do things for yourself. The three doctors who wrote the book that you read, Beat the Streets, they served others as doctors. So your goal is not to be about you, your goal is to be about someone else. That's what the B.I.G. is about.
I didn't like numbers, and I majored in accounting because of the killing. I have a degree in accounting, and I don't like numbers, but here's what I do like, and I found out. I like hitting people. I started playing football when I was four years old. I dislocated my shoulder when I was seven. I broke my first opponent's leg when I-
Ms. Howard, can you pick up?
I always like hitting people. So I found a profession where I can hit people equally. It's called football. Y'all not laughing about it? So all of a sudden, here's the difference. Everybody say it once again. My value is in my difference.
So Dream Big's really an example of our overall philosophy at Berkeley Middle. Like I said earlier, we want the kids to read more, so we give them an interesting book. We want them to think about it. We have them write essays about it. They do presentations. The best part of the day is to see the kids interact with the individuals. So they get to ask them questions. So how often does a middle school kid get to sit down with people from different professions and ask them about their job? So they were asking the police officer about benefits and what that means and why that's important to his family. They talked to the musicians and figure out how you got your first record deal, or how you got a CD made. So real-life things that kids are interested in doing. And then the most important message that we want to send to our kids is that you give back to your community. So our motto at Berkeley Middle is to empower yourself, encourage your peers, and enrich your community. And it comes from this program, which started seven years ago, and that's the mantra that we use over and over with our kids. You take care of yourself and be smart, you encourage the people around you, and then when you get what you need, you give back to the community where you came from. We believe that's what successful, that's what successful people are and what they do.
My name is Hosa Burrow.
Tell me, tell me what you've done here at school today.
Oh, well, we met with a couple of people, like, that work at some pretty cool jobs, that, they told us about the degrees and what you have to do to get into college. We were just in there doing some, like, team-building activities and stuff, and it's been a really cool time.
What stands out in your mind about today?
Oh, what really stands out is what people did and what they had to overcome and achieve to be able to get to the position that they are in today.
Does this help bring you to life a little bit, maybe, this?
Um, yeah, it really did, in a way, because some people just had to overcome some things, like, a certain person was, like, called out because of his skin color, and that's probably, like, a big problem to them in society, so.
What's your dream?
So, we know that we reach kids when we do this program because we see an immediate change in a lot of kids and their, their work habits, their seriousness towards work, how they treat one another, and so it's a great way to kick off our year. Unfortunately, we had it scheduled for last Friday when we had to cancel school, so we've done some rearrangements and are going to do it again on this Friday. But we, we know it's worthwhile, we see a difference in kids immediately, and it shows our kids, because we have to come together as a school community to pull off the event, and they see their teachers working together, with their parents, with their community members, and so it's a, just a great example of, of what people do when they work together. And so then just one last clip as we end up, and then I'll end there.
That's awesome. So have you had contact with the doctors who wrote the book?
They have a Facebook page, and I posted on their Facebook page that we were doing this day, so they, they are guest speakers nationally. We did purchase copies of the documentary about them called The Pact, and all of the students watched that this morning. And then we also had students from McClure South Berkeley came over to talk to the kids about what they need to do to be successful in high school. I think the biggest thing that always, two things that impressed me. It takes our whole building, I'm the, I'm the chairperson of this, but we had 11 teachers stay till 6 o'clock the other night getting everything prepared. Our maintenance staff does all the setup and moving things in between sessions. Our cafeteria staff cooked Thanksgiving dinner today and served 140 students at one time. We have area businesses donate flowers, decorations. We purchased T-shirts at a discounted price. We had cupcakes donated, so we had area businesses involved. It takes our whole staff in order to make this day happen, and everybody willingly does it for the sake of our kids. And then the other thing that impresses me is that our guests always thank me for giving them the opportunity to come here, and they've given up their time and talent and sometimes pay to be here for the day, and yet they thank us for letting them be here.
Best name?
Tamika Trotter.
So Tamika, so tell me, tell me about this day. What, what have you done?
Project Dream Big is teaching us how to encourage others and just not doubt yourself and how you are something in life and how you can be something in life. The best I say was learning that you are something and you can be something in life.
That's awesome. Did you doubt that about yourself before today?
No. I always believe in myself.
Oh, what's your dream?
I want to grow up to be a chef, because when I was little, my aunt, she always encouraged me to do what I love, and we used to cook a lot, so I like cooking and stuff. I want to be a chef when I grow up.
So how are you going to get from-
Okay, so in a nutshell, that's Dream Big. What's, what we value most about it is it is all curriculum-based. So it's not just a day where we're having fun, it's all attached to the book, they're writing, they're learning, and so that's what we think that real learning is about and what you should, what you should do. So I don't know if you had any questions about anything, or, you're all welcome to come on Friday.
I am on Friday.
You know, we're going to email it, because we're still figuring those out since we had to rearrange it. I think it's, I think it's 11. Yeah. So from 11 to 1:30.
Thank you, Steve. The next middle school principal is Jeremy Van Pelt, principal at Cross Keys Middle
Why, thank you very much. I, I want to compliment Mr. Lawler on, on that program. As a matter of fact, when our English Language Arts teachers were gathering earlier this year, they were so energized by what that program promoted that they want to go visit and try to produce that at Keys next year, which I think would be fantastic. So if anybody in the audience has an awesome story that they'd like to tell, or some obstacles they've overcome, please put us on your list, and we'll perhaps get something together as middle schools. So, that being said, sorry, little side segue there. Well, at Cross Keys, we're working argumentative writing, and so I'm going to provoke you just a second here. If you were an eighth-grade student, or a seventh-grade student, did you know that the food service provider for Cross Keys Middle School is considering switching to baked french fries instead of deep-frying french fries for the remainder of the school year? Hopefully, that would produce just a little bit of a position, position on your behalf, and maybe this isn't the best mic. So I want you to write an argument to address one side or the other, baked fries or deep-fried french fries. Well, in order to do this argument well, incredibly, to answer this question, we have to be able to state our position or claim, we have to be able to provide evidence and reasoning behind that evidence, and we have to be able to acknowledge a counterclaim, and we have to be able to then rebut that counterclaim. So at Cross Keys Middle School, our goal, and it just, we just aren't beginning this now, starting in September, but our goal is to be able to produce over a two-year period, eighth-grade students who are able to create a sustainable and reasonable, reasonable being key, argument by the time they get to high school. That is high school quality and will not take remediation. That's the goal. It's not an easy goal, but it is an important goal. Why is this so important? It's important because it's incumbent upon us to produce a literate public who are able to create reasonable arguments in order to perpetuate a representative democracy. Thanks to, and there are many things that get in the way of that, but thanks to the rapid growth of the internet and the abundance, and really even overabundance, of information that is available there. For instance, I was being goofy this evening and decided, okay, I'm going to, going to Google Penguin with an Attitude. I came up with two and a half million responses, or pieces of information, items, in a quarter of a second. Well, obviously, that's not all reasonable information. We have to be able to sift through that and determine what is reasonable, good information. So that's what we are trying to do here. We're trying to be able to, now, students must be able to think flexibly, they must be able to think creatively, but most importantly these days, they have to be able to think critically. So that's what we want to do. In order to make all, sense of all this stuff, and really see the connections between and among these significant items, or the things that are significant, we have to be able to create, create critical thinkers, and so that's what we're trying to do. The key to this, obviously, is the writing aspect, as you can see in our initiative here. And here's the heart of it. Good writing is good thinking, and if we want to create critical thinkers, the best way for us to identify critical thinking is to be able to see it, and we can see it in their writing. First, we have to understand that writing includes, all writing, including argumentative writing, has to happen in all content areas. It can't just be with our English Language Arts teachers anymore, it has to be in all content areas. So that's the, the first big hurdle we have to get over. The next big hurdle is helping, you know, because it's been truly an eye-opening experience for teachers and students to, to understand and see that they're doing this writing in all classes, even PE. They're not just writing in their English Language Arts teacher classes. So that's the first thing, and it's been very eye-opening. The second is helping the staff to build the confidence and capacity to feel like they can do what has traditionally been English Language Arts kinds of skills with their skill, with their students, to be able to build that and assess that. So we have, we get that done with our teachers. We first must build reading skills with our students, because they're going to be encountering, through this nonfiction kind of information, they're going to be encountering very difficult vocabulary and difficult concepts. So we have to be able to build their capacity to read and understand and find this evidence. We do that in a bunch of ways, by ability grouping, by using special programs like corrective reading that are showing great gains in reading, and through other online programs that help support reading. We get them to the point of being able to find this, this really important information and good information. So now what? What do they do with it? Well, there's tons of information. So now they have to be able to categorize it, they have to sort it, organize it, and then synthesize and put it together so that it makes some sense somehow in some way. So that's what we, where we are really focusing. We teach pre-writing skills at that point, students being able to bucket and group it so that they can see things that are alike and things that are different, and then learn to connect them. We also have, have to provide opportunity for them to be able to speak with their peers or collaborate with their peers, because it is through that collaboration that they are able to come to a deeper understanding of the meaning of what they're looking at and what they're ready to argue. They don't have to agree with their peer, but they have to be able to go through the discourse necessary to be able to create this deeper meaning. And then obviously, as with all of us, we all learn best through feedback, so there has to be constant, consistent and frequent feedback, and specific feedback for these kiddos. So that's what we have to do, and that's hard to do. It takes time to do it and do individually when you want to do it specifically, but we have to create new ways in our classrooms that we can provide that opportunity to get feedback. So how does this work? How does this look at, to give you a picture, so I've talked a bunch here at this point. These are the five major parts here. Claim, warrant, reason, evidence, counterclaim, and counterclaim rebuttal. I guess I can't walk over here and do that at the same time. We just spoke about those. Oh, I could take the clicker, couldn't I? One of those newfangled things. Oh, this is so small. Unfortunately, what you cannot see here through argumentative writing, backwards. Pardon me. Pardon me. I want to show you the progression that we go through. As students typically, when they get to middle school, well, I don't know how to work that thing, so come over here and go backwards. When they get to middle school, they typically have written narratively. In other words, stories and given opinions and so forth. What this says up here. Point this out to you. Now with argumentative writing, as we go through and reach these higher standards we must reach, this first part says claim. That's a color, it's coordinated to a color down here on examples. We have, students in sixth grade will now have to be able to create a claim, create a warrant, and an evidence. So a warrant is the reasoning. Why does this evidence make sense or what evidence do I have to make this reasoning make sense? Yet, in other words, creating facts. So if I'm pointing up there, claim, warrant, evidence. In seventh grade, we progress that to another level and you have claim, warrant, evidence, and you move to the counterclaim. And so you see the progression. Then finally with eighth grade, as we get to eighth grade and ready to create a high school-ready argument, it is claim, evidence, warrant, counterclaim, and then the counterclaim rebuttal. So how does that look when you're actually writing this? This purple here, the first part up there, I'm going to read it to you, says, "Switching to baked french fries in our cafeteria is a good idea because..." There's the claim. Secondly, "They are healthier and cost less money to make." And that's the reasoning or warrant. And then finally, the evidence behind it is the fact. "In fact, traditional fries cost $1.50 a serving. Baked french fries only cost $1." Now, I know that almost every one of our middle school students would take this position, right? Okay, maybe not, but that's what we're using for now. So in seventh grade, we would ask them, okay, let's add on the counterclaim. So we've gone through the reasoning and facts and now we've added to that this next part in the green here and it is, "However, I realize that some of my friends will say that this is a bad idea because they prefer the taste of regular french fries." Much more like a middle school student. But that's not where this person, if they really want to do a good job with their argument, they have to continue on with something more than that because they have to be able to rebut it. This counterclaim shows that they're willing to be reasonable and that's the key here. I can reason, I can see your opposition and where you might be on this, but for us, we need to look at it a little deeper than that. So here we go. We go through all that, we look at the counterclaim and then we follow it up at last part there. But I would remind them that they should consider the negative impact fried foods can have on their health. Now, I have, I brought student writings with me, but I don't believe we have time to go through those, but it's pretty amazing to see some of the growth that individuals have done. Overall, we started this, we first tested a baseline and at the end of September, on a four-point rubric that we graded through, you'll see that we scored about a 1.8. That's where we were overall, seventh and eighth grade, obviously seventh grade having less skills than the eighth grade. And then when we tested again toward the end of November, about a month and a half later, we were scoring at about a 2.4, two and a half. So we showed 25% growth. We're making improvement, but remember I said this is a two-year effort and it is not an easy effort as we get everybody on board with it, but it is a very worthy effort. In fact, it is our firm belief that if we continue with this mission, not only will our students do very well on standardized assessments, but also we will, and most importantly, we will create literate and critical thinkers prepared for life outside of school and after school. Thank you, guys. You have any questions about our program? All right, thank you. Sorry so long.
Thank you, Jeremy. And our last middle school principal to present this evening is Susan Kelly with Ferguson Middle School.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The initiative that I would like to present this evening is our focus in addressing bullying in middle school. It's been a problem. It's in the media. There have been tragic consequences. We were fortunate enough to be chosen by Chad's Coalition last year to introduce a program called Olveus and that is how we are funded. Bullying by definition was shared initially with our students as when someone repeatedly and purposefully injures verbally or physically another person who has a difficult time defending oneself. So knowing that Ferguson Middle School, we trained and gave development to bus drivers, custodians, teachers, cafeteria. And we all came together with our students to have a common definition and a common goal and what do we do to combat bullying. In bringing the students in, we have 53 ambassadors and these ambassadors are safe people, people where any student can stop, as you will see in a video shortly, that they know that that's a person who will stand up and is strong enough to help them. 30 minutes per week at Ferguson Middle School, we stop and we have a class for Olveus. In this class, it's a common curriculum, but Olveus is a program. Our curriculum is geared towards Ferguson Middle School. We didn't take a cookie cutter. Our teachers and our students worked together to address issues that are affecting Ferguson Middle School. For example, social media, huge problem. We addressed that. It was met with so much enthusiasm that local TV, KMOV, we caught their eye and they came to Ferguson Middle School to take a look at Olveus. And I'd like to share that video with you at this time. It will shed a light on a lot of your questions.
Ferguson Middle School is winning the fight against bullies. The school was picked to test an anti-bullying program.
In one semester, teachers say they've scared away a significant number of bullies. Claire Kellet shows how orange badges are playing a key role in creating a safer school environment.
What class are you going to, buddy?
Anton Drummond does a lot of talking when he's walking between classes at Ferguson Middle School. He's supposed to. The badge he's wearing gives him permission.
Hey, girls, how you doing?
When you wear that badge, orange anti-bullying badge, what does that mean you do? What is your responsibility here at school?
My responsibility is to like keep kids from getting bullied and like if I do see something happen, I pull them away or I go tell a teacher about it.
Drummond told me he's one of about 28th graders who are ambassadors at school, meaning they look out for kids caught in painful situations.
I feel bad seeing kids get hurt and get yelled at and cry.
Talk about our definition of bullying, share some examples of bullying from things that we've seen here at school this year.
Teacher Jen Stevens is the driving force behind the school's use of the Olveus Bullying Prevention Program. She coaches the ambassadors and prepares the staff for weekly class meetings addressing mental health and ways to stop bullying.
As you saw in the classroom this morning, the kids are really feeling comfortable opening up and sharing and talking.
Stevens tells me taking the time to talk during the school day has created better relationships among the kids and between students and staff. Everyone from the principal to the bus drivers have gone through the anti-bullying training since it started in January.
You said it's been a successful program in the short amount of time it's been at school. How do you track those results?
We track those results a number of ways, through data. We take a look at our office referrals and see, are we getting fewer referrals for those kinds of classroom disruptions? And I believe we had a 30% decrease.
The orange badges are unique to Ferguson Middle School, but the district hopes the pilot program carries over into all of its schools. Claire Kellet, News 4.
So you can see, our students are enthusiastic, our teachers are enthusiastic, and, and we're very proud of this. We know that this is working because our students are able to articulate specifically what a bullying behavior is, know that it has to stop, and they know who they can go to. So I think that common language is foremost the most important, that everyone in the building knows exactly what it looks like and what we do in every situation. Thank you.
Nicole, I forgot to ask my usual question. Could each principal please introduce their staff and parents and teachers that are in the audience?
I know I have several teachers, Mrs. Stevens, Scott, and you all too. Yes, Becky, oh, Bistaz. I didn't even get to... Really, I'm not used to talking so far away from people, so this is very strange. I apologize, it was kind of shaky.
There are any, Mr. Van Pelt, are there were some Cross Keys students here? Could you stand and give a wave? Thank you. Thank you, Ladonna Barnett, guidance counselor, Shirley House Office Manager. Thank you all. And thank you to the middle school principals. Ms. Kelly, thank you. Thank you.
I want to thank all three middle school principals for their presentation. In the past, we've always had data dashboards and, and facts and figures and I asked the principals this time to, to give us something about their school that makes their school unique and something they're proud of. They did a great job and it was good to see. Item number 10, 2013-14 Gifted Education Report. Dr. Sheila Ward.
Evening.
Good evening. Probe, our gifted education program, service grades one through 12 in all of our Ferguson Florissant schools as well as our non-public schools in our attendance area and our homeschoolers. Each student receives 300 minutes of instruction per week. We are servicing 464 students. Our newest initiative is our enrichment program. And our enrichment program is designed for students who are recommended by their classroom teacher and principal who are on the cutting edge of being in the Probe or Gifted Education Program. We service those students on Friday. This is our newest initiative and I must say it is going very well. Our students long to be at the Probe Center. Our teachers have been studying and have been in service by Dr. Donna Ford in her research about recruiting and retaining culturally different students. We have also sponsored a parent night to help focus parents on teaching and educating their students in games that enhance learning in order to assist students with becoming more deductive thinkers and critical thinkers. One of the things about the Probe staff is that we really like to talk about data. So tonight, what we planned is a data presentation to show how our students are progressing as well as how we look compared to other schools, neighboring districts, per se. And so kind of like Jeremy, I'm going to have to move to the screen because I want to make sure that you actually, I can highlight and you can see exactly the points that I'd like to make. Our first chart shows the gifted MAP achievement levels compared to our other district students. And if you notice that our district students score at 34.9% on the MAP in Communication Arts, but our gifted students in third grade are at a 97.1%. Across, you will see that the fourth grade scores at a 97.8%, fifth grade 94.3%, and 100% for grade six, seventh, and for 100% for our English II classes. Next slide, please. In mathematics, our district students score at a 35%, but, I'm sorry. Our district students score at a 35%, but our gifted students score at a 97.1 in third grade, a 100% in fourth grade, a 91.4% in fifth, 97.4 in sixth, and 100% in seventh grade. In eighth grade, 91.5%. Next slide, please. This is a comparison of science. Our gifted students scores at an 88.6% in fifth grade, grade eight, an 89.8% and a 100% in our biology classes. Next slide. It's taking this on a minute to come up. The various colors shows, the red one shows our gifted students in third grade by ethnicity and it shows that our students are scoring at a 97.1% our gifted students. And this shows our minority students here in third grade, they scored at a 94.7%, which is really close to our gifted students. In grade four, there is a, let's see, where's my line here? 97.8% our minority students outscored our gifted students at a 100% score. In grade five, the same, 94.3% for our gifted students and our minority students scored at a 100%. Grade six, both groups scored at a 100% and the same in grade seven. Next slide, please. In the area of mathematics with our ethnicity, ethnicity, ethnixacy, I'm sorry, comparison, it shows that our gifted students scored at 97.1%. Our minority students scored at a 94.7%. In fourth grade, both groups scored at a 100%. In fifth grade, our gifted students scored at a 1.4% and our minority students scored at a 95-point score percentage. Sixth grade, and you can see all the way across that our gifted students and our minority students within our program are scoring extremely high in our mathematics. Next slide. This is a comparison of our science scores. In science, our gifted students scored at an 88.6% and our minority students scored in grade five at a 90%. And if you look all the way across at the science comparison, this is our area of concern. So what we've done this year is that we've ensured that in every class that there are some science concepts that are being taught. Next slide. This is a slide that our gifted teachers really like showing because it gives us a comparison with our state and with our surrounding districts. And if you notice that our state for in third grade is at a 94.1%, but our Probe students here at Ferguson Florissant are at a 97.1%. And you can look all the way across to the other districts and see if our comparison. And really, when you get to grade six, seven, and eighth, we are leading the pack in our gifted program compared to our neighboring districts. This is my report. Are there any questions?
Just, just to clarify, when you're talking about gifted and then minority, those, those columns are actually gifted, total, and gifted minority that you were reflecting on, right?
Yes, gifted minority.
Yep, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I need a motion to accept the report. Gifted education. Do you second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Schrader. Made motions made by Mr. Martinez. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And accepted the 2013-14 Gifted Education Report. Number 11, McClure High School Business Lab Update. Mr. Bolich.
Good evening, Board. The vocational enhancement grant is designed to keep the career and technical education program supplied with the latest equipment, training, and software. The district matching funds $6,446.60 will be used in conjunction with DESI funds, $17,839.80, to update the remaining business lab room, 1226, in McClure High School. Total cost is $24,286.40. Now, what that will buy us, 30 CPUs, monitors, keyboards, two black and white duplex printers, print both sides of paper, one color printer, microtype site license. Now, that's a 50/50 match. Everything else is 25/75. And we switched out a smart board for projector. Because initially, when I went in to survey the room, they were in need of a smart board. By the time we put the grant in, got it approved, went back in, the smart board had been installed. So they just need a projector now. Are there any questions?
Mr. Schrader?
Motion to accept.
I need a motion. Mr. Ebert? And seconded by Ms. Sockshead. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the McClure High School Business Lab Updates, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Very good, Mr. Bolich.
Thank you very much.
Sammy Joyce, Draft of 2014-15 Student Calendar and Teacher Work Calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, members of the Board of Education. You should have received a copy of the draft 2014-2015 Student Attendance and Teacher Work Calendar. The Calendar Committee conducted surveys among district staff to seek input into this draft calendar. It was developed in partnership with the FFNEA and Administration. The proposed draft calendar meets DESI guidelines for student attendance days and school hours. According to District Policy 2012, the Board of Ed... Hello? Education, we ask final calendar in April. So this is just a draft, and we will bring back a final calendar in April. Be happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Amy, several years ago, parents came to us and asked if we would please adopt the calendar in December because a lot of them had to make their vacation plans in January and tell their supervisors when they needed off and tried to make that at the same time that students, that their students were out of school and just make their life much easier. So now that this policy has changed, will the calendar change? Can parents still count on that this will be the calendar that will be pretty well proposed, especially like the large vacations and that type of thing? Because in January, a lot of parents do need to plan for the school, for their year.
So we have a, we have a new district policy which we developed through negotiations. So one of the negotiating topics is working conditions. And so we have this draft calendar that right now, in principle, the FFNEA and Administration have, has developed for the Board of Education to review. So if either side brings the calendar to negotiations to discuss, it could be changed at that time, but I would anticipate minor adjustments within the framework. So we have an anticipated start date and an anticipated ending date for the Board to review, and I would say that we could have slight adjustments, but for parents to plan, they have the bulk of what we're thinking that the Board of Education would approve in, in April. So we would push this out as a draft calendar, anticipated to be approved in April, pending approval by the Board of Education.
And will, will families or anyone be able to have a copy of this so that they can plan in January?
Yes, we will post this on the district website as a draft calendar, final to be approved in April.
Thank you.
Ms. Joyce, I think it's just another thing that I think we've gotten feedback on. First of, first of all, it's very important that, well, professional development and healthy, mentally healthy educators are important. So all of those things go into this calendar. One of the results of that and of all of our conversations obviously is a number of half-days where, where it's a half professional development day. And so, obviously, this calendar reflects that. But it's also true that we've gotten a lot of feedback that that, at times, is difficult for parents to manage, particularly with younger children. And so, I just make that comment so that folks know that when the calendar is built, we're thinking about all of those things and trying to balance all of that. And so, I don't know if you have any other thoughts on that, but I know that that goes into what you guys, that thought process goes into what you think through, but, and certainly what the Board does, but...
Yes, parent consideration for supervision of elementary students is certainly discussed at the Calendar Committee. What I can tell you is that we believe that it's important, if there is a half-day, to make sure that high school has a half-day as well as elementary, so it's all on the same day, so older children can possibly supervise younger siblings for, for the parents. So we do discuss that within the committee.
Thanks.
Amy, I get a lot of questions from parents about the professional development days, if they could be on Friday or Monday. It helps with their childcare and/or if somebody wants to take a vacation and, and have a long weekend with their children. And I see that it's on here, so good job. I mean, a lot of Fridays, I mean, it's really helpful for the families.
Thank you. And the, to your point, Mr. Ebert, the one that is not on a Friday is an election day where we have a high volume of community members within our school. So we have that day off for professional development with our teachers, so the community can come into our schools to exercise their right to vote, and we have more space available to them. I would like to thank any member of the Calendar Committee that is here this evening for their time. So if you're in the audience, thank you. I appreciate the time that you put into the draft calendar, and we will bring forward a final in April for the Board of Education.
Well, thank you for your, your time on that and good work. Number 13, Strategic Plan Update. Mr. Steve Finkelstein and Ms. Gigi Mix. How you doing tonight? What do you, what do you have for us, Mr. Finkelstein?
Well, first of all...
Floor is yours.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Well, first of all, we're pleased to be part of the strategic planning process for this fine school district and help you create the future for your children and your community. Today, we're going to share with you the results, preliminary results of 981 surveys we have back. There's about 15 questions that were answered, and we're going to give you the highlights of the common themes from those questions. Questions like, what are your hopes? What are your fears? What's the one issue you want to address? If you were head of the Board for one day, what one change would you make? What's the biggest mistake we should avoid going forward? What should we stop doing? What should we start doing? And what should we continue doing to improve the overall district's success, the success of your children and the community? So if you could go to the next slide, please. During the process, we understand the uncertainties facing the district that were expressed earlier. In spite of these issues, the progress is being made. The surveys are coming in. Actually, we got one more last night, so the, the survey is still open. We're doing analysis that's still in process because we have thousands of responses, but we've identified some of the major trends. And there's some things right now that can be done that we'll share with you. And the planning process is moving forward. We'll provide a pathway to the future of the school district for you and your children. Next slide, please. So first of all, thank you for everyone who completed the survey. We're going to show you a breakdown that we had representation from Board, faculty, staff, parents, a few students, as well as teachers. And this feedback is extremely important because it's all about you. Next slide, please. So let's talk about the responses. Next slide. So if you take a look at this, you have a pretty good representation of people that completed the survey, depending on how long they've been involved with the Ferguson-Floreson School District. So we have a pretty good cross-section of those that have only been involved less than a few years, to some that have been involved over 20 years, and everything in between. So that helps validate the results because it's a pretty even distribution across experience levels within the school district. Next slide, please. This is the breakdown of the different schools, so, buildings. So you can see there were representation from, from every school throughout the district. And again, we can talk about, the survey is still open, and we'll talk about possibly ways of getting additional feedback. But there is representation across all the schools. The asterisk star shows the schools that have the highest participation. Next slide, please. If you look at the 981 surveys, you can see the breakdown in terms of certified staff, parents, and then also look at some of the other, from the Board, from the faculty, et cetera. So there's a pretty high concentration from certified staff and parents, were the two predominant sources of input for the survey. Next slide, please. So what are the common themes? What did the participants have to say in answering those questions that I talked about earlier? So I'm going to walk up here. It's Dawn. Okay, so the first question dealt with teachers. And the common theme was, teachers need to have training and development. We have to improve the morale and the retention of our teachers, certainly addressing the pay issues, and also allow for the creativity of teachers in the classroom. And tonight, we heard some of the great things that are being done in some of the middle schools, and to continue to allow the teachers to promote their creativity. In terms of students, maintain the high standards and expectations in academic achievement. And it sounds like tonight, there's been some outstanding performance. We want to make sure we maintain the focus of accreditation of the district and engage the students, improve retention of the students, and build pride. Also, focus on individual instructions, setting goals, and working with students in their areas of strengths, and making sure all students are successful. And then we talked about the individual education program, so we're focusing on the needs of the students. In terms of finances, make sure we achieve financial stability, look at other funding sources, and then also take a look at better allocating the resources within the district so we focus on the most critical items. Engagement deals with engaging all stakeholders, parents, students, faculty, administration, the community, and the leadership in the Board. The facilities, to make sure they're updated and provide the needed resources and supplies for the classrooms so the students have what they need. And in terms of leadership, provide the overall strategic direction. Make sure we focus on one district, that we're getting everyone on the same page in terms of going forward, and that's really the purpose of the strategic plan. And then to be more proactive in preventing issues in the future rather than reacting to issues. Next slide, please. Technology, to make sure we keep up with the new technology, which includes wireless in the classrooms, computers, iPads. And by having better technology, not only is it better for our students, but it's better for the teachers to have more time teaching and coaching and mentoring rather than administrative tasks. Processes, so the programs immediately align with the goals and the budget parameters, and a lot more consistency in the processes across the schools and the buildings. Need to address the class size. Right now, they're too large in general, and we need to lower the student-teacher ratio and also provide more supplies for the classroom. The climate in the classroom, we need to address the disruptions in the classroom, which includes, you heard about bullying. Need to enforce the current rules and be consistent on that. Need to improve campus security. And then let's be open and honest about the issues that we're facing now in those areas, and let's start addressing them now rather than wait till the strategic plan is being done. And also, it sounds like some of those programs are being acted on as we speak. In terms of the staff, better utilize the staff's talent, optimize the limited resources so we can leverage the strength of our staff and provide ongoing staff training and development so they have the right skills and education to continue to provide the best practices in, in training. Establish accountability for results and hold people accountable, both the students, the parents, the staff, the teachers, and the Board, so that the results that we're looking for, everyone is in this together. And consistency, make sure there's consistency in policies, procedures, in some of the best practices in teaching across the culture of the whole district. Next slide, please. So what can we do now? A couple things that came up through actions that could be taken on now. One is, we need to really proactively, this again comes from the survey, address the discipline and the disruptions in the classrooms. It's hard to learn without having a safe, stable environment in the classes, so start reinforcing and enforcing the policies, improving security, and holding people accountable. And the program we just heard about bullying fits right into that. The other thing was, how can we continue to have collaboration so that all the information from the stakeholders, people in this room, parents, faculty, community, et cetera, how can we go forward to make sure that everyone gets the right input so that the decision-makers in the Board can go forward with the right information in place? Next slide. So this is a quick summary. We're in the process right now of analyzing further information, and later on, we can talk with the Board about how to make additional survey, surveys available. Thank you very much.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Finkelstein, or want to address any of the issues that were...
Just, Mr. Finkelstein, the, as we heard earlier, you know, there was a question about being able to make sure that people were able to take the survey. It is still open.
Yes.
And you mentioned that we can look at other ways. So maybe, maybe we could think in our next get-together of some ways to, to provide that survey to others.
Absolutely.
Who may not have electronic access.
Right. And again, one other way could be if some people don't have access to the Internet, if they fill it out manually, we can figure out how to get that input into the survey results.
Yeah. Likewise, we might be able to set up a laptop, you know, kiosk or something at a couple schools where people could come in and fill it out there.
Sure.
Fifteen questions, not going long.
Yes. It was sent out several different ways, and maybe Jana can help, but it was sent out through emails, it was sent out in the newsletter, it was put out on the website, talking about the survey so people could access, or access the link. So it's just, all you would need is access to the Internet, and there's the code in the, in the, on the website as well as some of the emails. So a variety of ways it was sent out for accessibility. Well, not physically the survey, but if you had access to the website or newsletters, it was mentioned in there with the link of how to get to the survey. But we'll work with the Board to figure out a way to make sure more people have access.
Yeah, we will, we'll work on, on getting the access to, make sure that everybody has a chance to participate.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. Yeah, we can work with the Board, but that's, did you hear what you said as an idea?
I can't hear, no, ma'am.
The suggestion was to physically have the children take the survey home to the parents. And the parents will have access either to go to the Internet... And the parents will have access either to go to the internet or fill it out manually and mail it in.
Okay. Can I say, we, we'll, we'll talk about it at our next meeting and make sure that there's a way that we can get it, get it to you.
Yes.
Okay.
One more question?
Because the possibility is that, but you're saying you gotta look for more than you can do, but that's the responsibility, is it? Children can't take the survey home to their parents.
Right. We can make that happen. That's not a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah. Not, not a problem.
Yeah, we can make that happen. One more question? Yes, ma'am. When does it close? We can set that date, but it, we can keep it open, you know, till January 10th, January 15th, so there'll be plenty of time for people to fill it out. We have, we have not closed the survey. So it's still open, as, as I said, we had one more. We have not set a date to close it. Is that it?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Finkelstein. All right, Laura, Ms. Laura Madrussik in food service.
Good evening, everybody. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. On September the 20th, 2013, a food service survey was issued by the administration to parents, student, and staff. The survey was open through November 4th. We kind, we sent out our, I guess Nicole and Gwen sent out emails to the principals to ask the students and staff to participate, but we still had low participation. Okay, sorry. We had, of the survey responders, we had 301 parents who responded, and they actually represented all grades K through 12. There were probably, there were approximately an average of 36 responses for each K through 12 grade. We also had 105 responses from staff and 360 responses from the students. The majority of the student responses came from Cross Keys Middle, Berkeley Middle, and McClure High School. There were no elementary students who participated in this survey. And I do want to say at this point that Cross Key Middle students do not have fried french fries wherever Jeremy Van Pelt is, so that might be taken into account with the survey. I'm gonna look at the parent participation first. Of the parents who participated, 128 of their students buy lunches every day. 55 of their students never buy lunches, and the reasons were, were varied, but the biggest reason was the selection of food. Forty percent said that they didn't like our selection of food. And then 24% responded that there were other reasons, and they're not listed on there, but as I read through the surveys, some of the reasons that they had handwritten were that there was not enough time for their students to get through the lines. The students that had later lunches, again, most of the students that responded to this were the secondary students. So by the time, I guess, the secondary students got to the cafeteria, there wasn't enough of the favorite foods that they wanted to eat. So they just don't eat whenever there's not food there for them to, if, if it's a choice that they don't like. Also on the parent opinion, we asked about breakfast, and 40% of the parents surveyed stated that their students do participate in breakfast every day. And again, um, we do serve breakfast to all of the elementary schools right now, but secondary schools, we do not do breakfast in the classroom. They do have the option of getting the free breakfast, but not all of them participate. And 43 of the parents said that their child does not eat breakfast at school because breakfast is served at home. And then close behind, 32% also said it was, again, the selection of the food. So 44, so then with the student op, opinion on their lunches, 44% of, or 158 students actually do buy their lunch. Thirty-two or 114 students never buy their lunch, and the reasons were the following. Again, the biggest reason was because of the selection of food, and also the second reason was for the cost. Those who didn't participate, who did, the students that do not purchase lunch, oh, they also said that there was an other also, and they said it was the selection of food, and again, that it was the amount of time that they had to eat or their favorite foods were not available, and so they would not, they just don't eat lunch if it's not something that they want to eat. For the student opinion on breakfast, 24% or 84 students eat breakfast at school, and again, this was all middle schools that took this, that took this survey. And then 49% or 173 students do not breakfast, eat breakfast at all. And again, the biggest reason was the selection of food, or the next reason is because the students do eat breakfast at home. So we asked on the survey, what grade would you, would you give the food service? What, what rating would you give them? And so the parents and students both were, I put both on there because it kind of had the same theme. Eight, five percent or six percent of the parents and students said that they would give them an A. Thirty-five, 34% of the parents or 25% of the students said they would give them a B. 37% or 40% of the students said that they would give them a C. And then 24% or 29% said they would give them a below C, that they need improvement. So then they asked, how could we improve our grade? And the biggest reason, they said that they would like better tasting food, and then also the lower prices for the students. And it was a little bit different between the parents and the students, but the biggest factor was the better tasting food. And then we asked, how often does your child not receive their lunch choice? And so 42% stated that they never not received their lunch choice. And again, if they don't receive their lunch choice, it's because they're, the choice isn't available. Again, the secondary students were the ones that got that, and with the ones in the later grades got there too late and their choices were not available. What are the favorite school entrees? The biggest winner was the beef nachos and the chicken nuggets. And I'd like to save the fried french fries, but we don't serve those. And how would you rate the quality service from the cafeteria staff? And 36% of the survey takers rated that the service was good. They were asked about the taste of the food, and 42, and this is a staff survey results now, sorry, so this is where we're talking about the staff. The staff was asked if they, how they felt that the food tasted. Forty-two percent of the staff survey were neutral about the food tasting good. Again, on the staff survey, they were asked if, what, if there was a variety of foods, of items that they could choose from, and 30% of the staff felt that there is a variety of food items to choose from. The menu, the question was asked to the staff, does the menu provide a healthy meal option? And 36% of the staff agreed that the menu provides healthy meal choices. And the staff was also surveyed to find the overall quality, the taste, appearance, the temperature of the food, and if it was good. And 32% of the staff felt that the overall quality of the food is good. So we, and one of the other questions was, and they could write out their answer, was a way to improve the program. And the biggest thing, theme that I kept seeing through the whole survey was there was just not enough time for the students to eat, or there was not enough food from the last lunch period. They wanted us to offer food choices that the students would actually eat. And a lot of comments were, again, this is secondary students, and, you know, these kids are bigger, and so they were saying their kids are coming hungry, and so they were asking us to, to offer larger portions for their students. We also, they were also asking for us to offer more choices on the salad bars. They were stating that the food is just not appealing to our students and that the food does not taste good. So those were a lot of the comments that, the prevailing theme that I kept seeing. There were several other comments, but those were the ones that kept popping up. So that's just an overall synopsis of the food service survey. Any questions?
I'll go first. Thank you, Laura. So, obviously, that was quick, and thank you for moving fast, but there were a number of, there were a number of items in there that were, you know, opportunities for us, probably.
Right.
And, um, so, some of the same questions that we saw in the, in the, in the last survey that we just talked about. So in that one, we were close to 1,000 people. This, if I did my math correctly really quickly, it was more, just over 700 or so. So, um, so the strategic planning would be a better representation, I guess, overall. This survey still open or not still open?
It closed on November the 4th. We opened it up on September the 20th.
All right. And then just looking at a couple of the numbers, obviously, did you, have, have we had, do we have this electronically to look at?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
Yes.
And, but just looking at that, you know, in terms of service, again, this was quick math as you were flipping through, but that basically left about two-thirds at, of the respondents saying that it was at a C or below.
Correct.
Um, you know, I heard the comment that one, was, one of the reasons why folks didn't get what they wanted to get was that they got there too late.
Correct. Not enough food for that choice.
Yeah. So that, my, my guess is that in most instances, that's probably not the students' fault.
Correct.
I'm gonna make, jump on that limb anyway. And, um, and about, I think it was the staff, two-thirds of them felt that the variety wasn't, wasn't good enough.
Correct.
So, again, these are opportunities, this is a, I know, I know everybody's working hard, but this is kind of a theme, and I think it's probably not one that's gonna go away until we find, together, find some solutions, so, whatever that means, so.
Right.
But I, I look forward to looking deeper into that, that information and trying to see what, you know, what we can figure out.
And also on the surveys that you guys received, you, you'll be able to see all the comments, too.
Sure.
You know, so.
Sure. I mean, you know, as, I don't want to get too tangential here, but, you know, reading an article recently and talked about one, uh, program that's trying to help kids, um, eat better and it's, and, and think more positively about school meals. And it, you know, one, one thing that they noted was that it's not just about the food, but it's about the entire environment, it's about the service, which I'm glad to see that on there. But also, um, that, um, it was about the, uh, kind of where, where they were. You know, we don't go to a restaurant just because of the food. We may like the atmosphere, you know, they have great TVs to be able to watch the game, or it's comfortable and quiet and you can talk. So, um, looking at the environment that the kids are in.
Correct.
As well. So I look forward to seeing how we, how we can look at some of those things, too.
Anybody else have any comments? Well, thank you very much.
It was on, it was online, too, yes. Yes, yes.
Hey. make sure that it gets taken care of?
I'll, I'll go.
Thank you.
I'll go get that after I talk. She was wondering if there is like a timeframe and when decisions are made. We're constantly looking at our food service program, and so we, we are continuously working on that, so.
But is the diet support a threat?
Yes.
Do you expect that actually, do you expect to, um, not, um, do you expect?
As soon as possible. We will be working on that. We actually have a new dietitian who is helping us. Her name is Kelly, and she's doing a fantastic job. Mr. Martinez talked about the atmosphere, and she is doing a great job of bringing the community and, and bringing food, and it's, it's a topic. It's not just a meal to eat. It's also, the kids need to learn to make healthy choices and, and have a variety of foods to eat. And so Kelly is visiting the schools, working with, she is developing programs and working with the students on that, too. But we will continuously work also on the, on the issues that are, that were presented in the survey, so.
The, what, way back even when I ran for the board, this was a huge issue, and I get this asked almost more than curriculum questions, actually. And I've talked to the board many times about this, and, and I really believe this needs to be a high-focus area.
Yes.
It just, it never goes away. I mean, so there, there definitely something that, that we need to address here and, and do a much better job with, with, with our students and, and the community. I can barely go to an event and, in all full disclosure, and somebody not mention something about the food program. And I know we keep saying we're gonna improve it, and I'm glad we, we have new input, but I, I think this needs to be a job one with a lot of us, I really do. That's just my opinion.
Well, let me, let me add to that, because the first step of improvement is admitting that you have a challenge, and this is the, this is the first time I've felt like I've seen, uh, I'm just gonna be, I'm just gonna be blunt here. This is the first time I feel like I've seen an honest survey. This is the first time I feel like I've seen a relatively honest sur, survey with relatively neutral questions, so, good start.
I agree with that, as, as negative as I sounded. You know, I really agree with that, and, you know, I've been saying for a long time these things, but I agree with you, Chris. I mean, this is actually, you guys did a great job.
Thank you.
Now, we just gotta take it from here and go forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, next item on the agenda is graduation, and it's just a discussion item. Ms. Weitzel, are you still here? Aren't you? There you are. I know we were talking about different locations and, and the challenges of, of having, uh, graduation back at, at the high schools, looking at a $30,000 a year budget to rent the family arena. One of, one of my comments was that if we're gonna spend that kind of money, we can, we can spend some of it at home and, and have an improvement for a long time as opposed to one day. So what, what kind of challenges are we, we up against and, and what are some of our solutions that we, we might need to address?
Well, the challenges vary from school to school. So, McClure South Berkeley, with it being a smaller school and a smaller graduation class, they are, they are able to hold their graduation inside their gym. It will mean that there's less tickets that are given compared to the family arena. So typically, at the family arena, kids are given between 10 and 12 tickets for their guests. And so at McClure South Berkeley, they would probably get close to seven, so it does reduce. But they don't have to, when you have a football field, then you have to worry about inclement weather and planning inside, but at McClure South Berkeley, they can hold theirs in the gym, but, and again, it just means less tickets. They also would have, um, a closed-circuit broadcast that could be viewed in the auditorium, but it mean that everyone that came wouldn't be able to see the event live. And at all three schools, parking's an issue. There aren't enough parking spaces on campus for everyone, so it's then using, so for example, McClure South Berkeley, they could have folks pull, park at our Lady Guadalupe, possibly at Vatara, but then you have to have shuttle buses, so it's, the parking is certainly not a convenient issue, or not a convenience, so it would be similar if you remember when we were at Umsul, because Umsul's, the gym was not close to any of the parking garages, so people had to park farther away, we had shuttle buses, and that disposes a little bit of a challenge. At McClure High School, the parking again is a, is a huge issue there. There's maybe about 300, some on parking spaces on campus. Having graduation on the football field, which has been done one year, the highway no- At, here at McClure North, we've certainly had an opportunity to have gradu, I mean, have events here, so you can kind of see the setup, you would have, if it rained and we were inside, these chairs here where the folks are sitting would be the graduates, and then the bleachers accommodate a lot more here, you would have a closed-circuit broadcast in the cafeteria, you could hold it up in the upper advisement, but again, people would have to view it through a video, not live. Now, the football field, if it's, if it doesn't rain, and you're, then you're in a great position, McClure North's football field will hold a good amount, there's room to add chairs, it's handicapped accessible because of the way that you can access it with the cement drive along the back of the bleachers, so there, again, you're talking about seven tickets, so it is a difference between the family arena. I know that Mr. Spiller had spoke with some of his students that they were concerned about McClure, the handicap accessibility, the highway noise, and the number of tickets, so they were inquiring about would it be possible for them, even though they don't want to have their graduation here, they knew they could give up that kind of, we're not on our campus, we're at our, one of our rival schools, to allow for more guests to attend this kind of rite of passage in their life. So that's, we've been, we've worked, we met as a group before school started in August to kind of start our initial planning, we met as a large group, and then I've gone back to the high schools, because we looked at all of the, all of the components of what needs to happen, that we would have to take care of, that we didn't, didn't have to worry about in the, in when we're at family arena, just to kind of make sure we were covering everything, and since some of those things vary from school to school, then we've broken off and have individual meetings at the school level to look at the parking, the setup, the venue, and, and tickets and what have you. And I believe I have a, there's a typed written update that I share with Mr. Leroux as well, that, that can be shared with you.
Can you, can you run over the numbers for me again, three high schools, compare the two venues, just?
Compare the two venues?
Yeah, in terms of amount of tickets that each student would get, yeah.
Well, certainly, I mean, at the family arena, you could go with unlimited tickets, but just to, you know, maintain a crowd that is a decent size and not to, just to limit that, you know, we want, we don't wanna have it to be too much, we give the kids between 10, about 10 and 12 tickets. So, at the high schools, at McClure South Berkeley, because they don't need the football field, because they can hold theirs indoors, it's gonna be about seven tickets. For McClure and McClure North, if it were on the football field here, if they both were at the same place, you're talking seven tickets if you're outside, five if you're inside.
Gotcha. I, I'm just gonna, I, I know it's kind of, you're, you're just the messenger, so don't take this the wrong way, I just, I have to go on record to say I'm just, I've never been a fan of the situation, particularly when we've had a situation where, where students can bring 10 or 12 potentially, and now you're gonna, now we're looking at half in some cases, that, I think that's just, that's difficult for, for some family situations, and, so, and I know we had a security situation with one of our high schools, and that high school wasn't allowed to use that building anymore, but I, I think we've.
You mean at, at the family arena?
Yes.
They, they're allowed, they're, they just were, they were given that situation, they were considering going back to their building, just to not have that situation happen outside of their, just.
Huh.
And I could be wrong about that.
Is that how you recall hearing it? Yeah.
Oh, then I, I could be wrong then, I'm sorry.
Let me, let me go ahead and go on record again as I raise my voice.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's absolutely not what we were told.
That's not at all what we were told.
And I could be wrong about that, maybe I misunderstood that.
So, here we go again.
So, I'm sorry, Chris, I will, I can verify that with the family arena.
No, no, I'm sure you're right. So, anyway, we had a situation with one high school, and we threw the baby out with the bath water, or in this case, the graduate's family out with the bath water, because we decided not to take that one school there, and so then, now two others, for whatever reason, and now two other schools can't go there as well, I, I just, to me, it's not, I don't think it's a fair decision, I, I'm not picking on you, I know you're just the messenger, but, again, to reiterate, but it's not, it's not an ideal situation, for sure, so.
At McClure, have you looked at the hub? Because I know we have, in the past, had about 2,000 people in the, in the hub for opening day, I don't know.
Um, yes, we actually, ironically, the, the hub is, the hub was built in 1990, and since the, since it was built, the rain never was an issue that the hub had to be used, but when I did, when I was principal there, and I had the contingency plans that in case it rained, it went from, I think, believe it was, because the hub was smaller than the outside, it went down to two tickets. And I think the concern for the principal there was just, even though we do have a lot of chairs that are in there, for when we had our, a week celebration with all of the teachers, you lose a good portion of the hub because you have to have the 300 chairs for the graduates, and that, that becomes, you lose all the space there. We've looked at that, unfortunately, the civic center, the theater there is not large enough, the McClure South Berkeley Theater only holds 500 students, the gym at Flow Valley is not large enough either, Umsul holds about 4,000, we've been there in the past, it just, we had switched for a variety of reasons, and the, the dates weren't available this year.
Is there any, any further discussion?
Well, if I could just make a comment about that, I taught here for 33 years, and of all the years we had those graduations, I think we had two that were inside, and so it's one of those things that, yes, we have to worry about those contingencies, but in reality, they happen seldom, but I agree with you completely, when it does happen, it's an unfortunate situation, and that's the same thing. Well, but I'm saying, whether, weather-wise, outside, you would have your seven or 10 tickets or whatever it is, the main concern is when you have to go inside, and we never made that decision. One year, it was raining until like, I forget, 6:15 or something, and then the principal got a lot of flack because people got their heels muddy, but at least we could have it outside where the people could participate, because the weather forecast was it will clear, and the rain did stop, and we were able to have the graduation outside, and you weren't stuck with only two tickets per student. So I know that the administration will always work to have as many people at graduation as possible, and one of the problems with the St. Charles Arena is if you've looked at our finances, it was a way to save $30,000, and that's not a fun decision to make, we sat up, how many million did we cut that one night? We had to sit and just go through the list one after the other, and you're making decisions that are very, very unpleasant, but the reality is, we're short, we're having another budget committee meeting next week, trying to work on getting out of the hole we're in for this year. So, the problem with the tax levy going down last summer causes real problems, and we just have to deal with that the best we can.
I, I think, go ahead, Paul.
I would have to defer to the people that have worked on this, I know in the past, when we were looking at going away from Umsul, I believe, Mr. Leroux, you were on that committee, and you were going all the way down into the city, trying to find venues that could host us, it's, it's, it's much more complicated than you might think.
I think we can probably have a conversation and see what the possibilities are, we may be limited in terms of timing and availability at this point, so, but I, I think, obviously, we'll, we'll hear what you all have to say in the near future about what possibilities there are, if any, like I said, there may not be any. One, one more thing is, I'd love to see the audio plan, because we've had two meetings in here, and as I was just listening, Mr. Schrader's mic cut out, just wanna make sure we're bringing in, no offense, there's some great people that do audiovisual here, I, I've seen it, I've witnessed it, but in terms of maybe setting up that kind of, maybe that's not something we wanna straddle on their backs.
Right.
Outsource that, possibly.
Can I, I wanna just piggyback on that, and that is when you were talking about having it at McClure South in the gym, the audio has always been a problem, and so, it really does need to be looked at if we continue to have it there this year.
We talked about that in the, in the meeting, that was brought up by one of the administrators, but thank you for that reminder, I'll make sure that we, we're good to go.
All right, well, thank you very much. All right, item number 16, suggestions and/or questions. A maximum of 30 minutes is provided for suggestions and/or questions from members of the audience. Members of the audience who wish to speak to the board are required, requested to speak from the podium, identify themselves, and limit their remarks to three minutes. In keeping with District Policy 4059 and Personnel Law, speakers should refrain from making negative comments that are personally identifiable. To comply with Missouri Sunshine Law and District Policy 4054 and 4059, board members will not respond to comments made during the public comment period. The subject of public comments will be noted in the minutes and appropriately addressed by the district. It is 9:06, so, 9:36. First, first person, please. Let's see if we can get a mic that works. There we go.
Good evening. For some reasons, there are some self-righteous folks among us who believe they are the only model parents, and based on their statements, that they, that we, right, we are missing in action, but I would encourage those individuals to educate themselves on the facts and not operate off of assumptions. You know, it took me a long time to wrap my mind around the words spoken by Jesus as he laid stretched out on the cross and said, "Lord, forgive them, for they know not what they do." This situation is a perfect example of this scripture. May the Lord forgive us all, particularly this board, for they know not what they do, that grieves the Lord and causes division and breeds destruction instead of love and togetherness. More than two weeks ago, I requested that tonight's agenda include a discussion of our children's mental state at this tumultuous hour, given that it's not on tonight's agenda, it's just another indicator that our children are not the focus or priority of some members of this board. Parents and citizens of this community, it is time to arm ourselves with voter registration cards. With knowledge on countless matters, I challenge any non-registered voter within the sound of my voice to take five minutes and either go online or stop by the, any public library and get registered, like parent Ms. Janine, who after the last board meeting, we talked, she is now a registered voter, and there are others I spoke with, they are now registered voters. This is our weapon right here, go arm yourself. We are looking for individuals who want to step up and be on this board, because this board will not look the same in the next school year, so we need individuals who are interested to let us know that you are interested, so that we can support you to be on this board. Applications are accepted as of December the 17th through Tuesday, January the 21st. Let's be clear about something, this matter is going to end one or two ways. Either Dr. McCoy is going to be reinstated, or he's going to be terminated by this board, and the board's actions over the last few weeks leads me to believe they have no intentions of doing what is right and are putting their energies into digging up any unmerited charges against Dr. McCoy in order to justify their irresponsible actions. So here's my question, how many teachers, books, extracurricular activities, educational and art programs will our children be deprived of because of your fiscal irresponsibility, childish actions, and shortsightedness? And last, as I leave this podium, Dr. McCoy does live in the district, thank you very much.
I, I would like to remind people that, that, please hold your comments to three minutes or less, so that everybody can have a chance to, to talk, please.
Good evening, my name is Laverne Mitchum, and I am a resident of the Ferguson Florissant School District. I would like to start my comments by reading two short quotes. The first one is by John F. Kennedy, and the quote reads, "Our progress as a nation can be no swifter than our progress in education. The human mind is our fundamental resource," as John F. Kennedy. The next quote is by Walt Disney, the quote states, "Our greatest natural resource is the minds of our children." These two quotes are as true today as they were many years ago, when John F. Kennedy and Walt Disney made them. I think all of us here know that we cannot progress as a nation unless all children are afforded a quality education. School boards across the nation search for competent, qualified superintendents, such as Dr. Art McCoy. We have a competent, qualified superintendent in Dr. Art McCoy. He deeply understands that our greatest natural resource is the minds of our children, he has a deep understanding of that. As I said to this board at the last meeting, as a taxpayer, a citizen concerned for all students, I appeal to this board. Applications are accepted as of December the seventeenth through Tuesday, January the twenty-first. Let's be clear about something. This matter is going to end one or two ways. Either Dr. McCoy is going to be reinstated, or he's going to be terminated by this board. And the board's actions over the last few weeks leads me to believe they have no intentions of doing what is right and are putting their energies into digging up any unmerited charges against Dr. McCoy in order to justify their irresponsible actions. So here's my question. How many teachers, books, extracurricular activities, educational and art programs will our children be deprived of because of your fiscal irresponsibility, childish actions, and shortsightedness? And last, as I leave this podium, Dr. McCoy does live in the district. Thank you very much.
I would like to remind people that, please hold your comments to three minutes or less so that everybody can have a chance to talk, please.
Good evening. My name is Laverne Mitchum, and I am a resident of the Ferguson Florescent School District. I would like to start my comments by reading two short quotes. The first one is by John F. Kennedy, and the quote reads, "Our progress as a nation can be no swifter than our progress in education." The human mind is our fundamental resource, as John F. Kennedy. The next quote is by Walt Disney. The quote states, "Our greatest natural resource is the minds of our children." These two quotes are as true today as they were many years ago when John F. Kennedy and Walt Disney made them. I think all of us here know that we cannot progress as a nation unless all children are afforded a quality education. School boards across the nation search for competent, qualified superintendents, such as Dr. Art McCoy. We have a competent, qualified superintendent in Dr. Art McCoy. He deeply understands that our greatest natural resource is the minds of our children. He has a deep understanding of that. As I said to this board at the last meeting, as a taxpayer, a citizen concerned for all students, I appeal to this board to reinstate a qualified, competent man of integrity. You need to reinstate Dr. Art McCoy.
Good evening. I'm Steve Marler, and I too am a taxpayer and live within the district. First of all, I'd like to thank each and every board member for standing up to the tasks that you have to do on a monthly, daily basis. The decisions you make are very hard to do. You are placed there by the voters that had confidence that you would make the right decision. I'd like to thank the board for doing what they've done in a manner that they've done and not hold whatever's taking place in a public forum on the news. I don't want to see about what's taking place here in the news. I want to come to a meeting here and find out the facts after all the facts are known and the answers to those facts and the decisions to be made are known. I'm not going to talk about personnel issues because that's a personnel issue. I have confidence that the board will handle the situation in a manner that they should. Otherwise, as the lady before me indicated, there's voting, you can vote people in, and you can vote people out. Thank you very, very much for what you've done, and I know that you'll make the right decision.
Good evening, everybody. Chuck Henson, former board member and certainly resident of the city of Ferguson, and certainly a product of this district. And to you, board, one of the things I certainly know is the sacrifices and the challenges that you face certainly in the decision times. But one of the things we have to remember as an elected official, that we are public servants, that we serve by the responsibility, with the responsibility, and for the pride of the citizens. The citizens have placed you on this board certainly to do what is in the best interest of the board. But the citizens also control what the situation and the direction you go in. At the last board meeting, they came out fifteen hundred people. Ninety-nine percent of those folks said that, "Board, you need to take a new direction with regard to this issue." We are, you are public servants. You serve at the pleasure of the public. So when the public comes out and says that you are wrong, you owe the public an explanation. You should change your direction. How often do we say that if you want to change something, get in touch with your elected official? Well, the public stood out and said, "You are wrong. We can't change your direction." But instead of doing that, you guys took a different position. You chose to entrench yourselves, to dig your heels in, and to go after the integrity of this man. That is a low blow. I do not expect that of professionals that you are. How could you go so severely after this man's integrity when the public says you need to change? It takes courage. Yes, it does. It takes courage. I am so disappointed that none of the six that chose this direction have stood up and said, "Guys, we need to listen to the people who put us here." Many of the people in the audience before, many of the people in the audience here voted for you, but they're saying you are wrong now. You owe it to the public to change your direction. You know, here's the one thing, do I tell you this? It is not too late. It is not too late, but what you do every minute, every day jeopardizes the quality of education and the integrity of this district and the integrity and the vitality of this community. One thing I want to also say about, I looked at Mr. Lawless, Mr. Van Pelt, Ms. Kelly. You do an exquisite job at what you do, because I've said through a number of the presentations that you've done for your schools in the past. The presentations that I saw tonight came nowhere close to what you produced before. I didn't see anything about major implementations or about challenges. I saw about deficiencies, but nothing about the implementation of the progress that needs to be put in place. I never saw anything about a great deal of data. We need that information, and then... Because I saw a format change as well. A format that had been put in place to have some consistency with regard to those presentations. There's also language that was removed. "Each child as my own." I didn't see that anywhere. "Each child as my own," that was removed. Also, I heard one very important thing that happened tonight, and I hope you heard it. I heard the board president say that I asked the principals to do something different. It is not the board president's directive, it is not his responsibility to dictate to any school administrator what he does in his presentation. You do not know your roles. Your role is to set policies and goals, not to direct the day-to-day. Every since this board has changed, you have tried to rule on a daily basis. It is not your position. No principal, no administrator should have the board president tell them how to run their school. It is not your responsibility. This board is not fit.
Mr. Henson? Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think you all know me. I'm Jim Clark. Been on the board. I was on the board for a number of years. I want to talk to you about two things that came to mind tonight. One is the survey for the food service. You have about eleven thousand five hundred kids eating lunches. That's breakfast and probably the noon lunch. How many did you have reported on the survey? I don't think the sample size was very significant. So if you pay attention to that data, I think you're going to be misled. Also, you have about two thousand staff members. I don't know how many eat the lunch or have breakfast in the district, but the sample size was pretty small there also. The other thing that's come to mind, my attention, is that you had a closed meeting back on the Fourth of December. You met for two hours and forty-six minutes or so, and you selected another lawyer. You just got through that process, the beginning of this school year, and now you've got another lawyer? What's going on here?
Hello, my name is Nicole Logan. I'm a resident of Ferguson Florescent and a proud parent. This close? Not quite sure that's sanitary. As previous individuals said before me, voting is the way for us to have our voice heard. So I just wanted to remind everyone here tonight that to ensure their voice is heard long-term, to vote during the 2014 school board election. Mr. Paul T. Morris, President, Robert Shabot, Secretary, and Chris, thanks, Shabot, Chris Martinez, Vice President, all three of them, their terms expire in 2014. If you want your voice heard, vote. I also want to make sure everyone understands that Paul Schroeder or Schrader was the only board member that voted to not place Dr. McCoy on leave. That's all I have to say today.
Good evening. My name is Shandra Myers, and I'm really happy to have this opportunity to have my voice heard. I was here at the previous meeting regarding Dr. McCoy. That's why I was here at the previous meeting. Tonight, I'm here for Dr. McCoy. I'm here, not in any particular order, but for my son, who attends Ferguson Florescent School District, and for the many kids who also attend. And just to represent and say that I am asking to have Dr. Art McCoy reinstated as the superintendent. That is my request. Like, I feel my heart beating really fast just over this issue. I have family all over the country. I have family in some of the top performing states with public high schools that are at the top. For example, Kentucky. Missouri doesn't have a lot of high schools, public high schools at the top for performance with competition across the country. And I just feel like when I talk to my family from California to Texas to Michigan, Kentucky, all over the country, and I tell them about this situation, they just are in disbelief. And it's just mind-boggling to me. I'm bewildered and befuddled to no end just at the fact that he could be put on administrative leave over, you know, difference of philosophy and focus, and maybe not following board directives or whatever was stated. It's very concise and simplified, but it's really perplexing. I really don't understand. I just feel like if there was someone else sitting up there who maybe had a difference in philosophy and focus, that you all would just talk about it, and you all could resolve issues, and that's how I think things should be done. But when I was here for the day that the parents could visit the school and stay with their student, and I stayed with my student, I heard the kids talk about Dr. McCoy. I saw their small protest just to stand up on his behalf. I was here and I wrote a personal handwritten letter when they asked everyone in the school to stop what they were doing and take ten or fifteen minutes to write their thoughts about what was going on, and that every letter would be read. I don't know if that happened, and I just feel at a loss. I came here tonight expecting some type of answer because at the last board meeting, we were told that we weren't going to be responded to. We could put our voices out, our questions and comments out, and I'm a little emotional, but I'm going to hold it together because this, you know, three minutes is really not a long time. But nothing is happening. And people at my job are asking, "Well, what's going on with the superintendent?" I got on the phone and I called the superintendent's office and requested to have a call back. No one ever called me back. You know, it's just, I'm hurt. And my daughter graduated from McClure North. She's successful. She has a double major degree. She's doing really well with her career on her way to get her masters. My son is here, and I'm thinking about pulling him out. And it's just sad. It's just sad. So, too bad I only have, you know, my time has run out, but I'll go and thank you for the opportunity.
Good evening. I'm Tim Hughes, and I'm actually employee of the district. I work in McClure South Berkeley. I am a JAG specialist, intervention specialist at McClure South Berkeley High School. But I'm going to switch hats because I'm a minister also, okay? So the hat I want to talk to you through right now is my ministerial hat. My dissertation for my masters at Eden Theological Seminary centered on the issues that we have the opportunity to give silence to today concerning Nelson Mandela. And one of the way that Nelson Mandela and Desmond Tutu dealt with the issues centered around apartheid, it wasn't through violence, it wasn't through imprisonment, but what it was, what they did was, they sat down and they talked to each other in truth and reconciliation. Reconciliation centers around forgiveness. We're in the spirit of Christmas. This is a time, should be a time of joy, should be a time of peace, should be a time of giving. And what I observe currently right now is a wide divide that is taking place between black and white. I'm just going to call it how it is. And we are better than that. We are better than that. We are humanoid. We are better than that. We are better than that. So I want to encourage the board tonight, as I risk my job, because I have students asking me, "What's, what happened to Dr. McCoy? I heard he stole money." Students are getting misinformation, and they're also being treated in an oppressive way. We need to stop the foolishness, stop the madness. Come together as human beings. Treat each brother, each other as brother and sister intellectually, spiritually, and lovingly. I know we can do that. So please, on your Christmas break, think about what you're doing. Study what Desmond Tutu and Nelson Mandela did to heal the land of South Africa because the land of Ferguson Florescent School District needs to be healed, in Jesus' name.
Hi. My name's Kim Benz. As you know, I'm a regular here at the meetings. And I just wanted to actually address just a couple of things from this evening's meeting. Number one, Cross Keys, my daughter going to Cross Keys. I wanted to acknowledge the middle schools for the report that they did. I know that normally it's a lot of data, but as a parent, it was kind of nice to, I would like to see that data, but it's also kind of nice to see some of the other things that are going on. And in particular, Ferguson Middle, what they're doing with their bullying program. As much news coverage as our district has been getting, to see that KMOV story on the anti-bullying program, I thought was awesome. And I really hope that that program can be implemented in the other middle schools and even possibly the elementary schools because I know we have, I have a sixth grader, and I know we have some sixth grade leaders that could easily be ambassadors for third, fourth, and fifth grade. So that's on a positive note. However, I have been looking forward to hearing results of the strategic plan. I'm a little disheartened that we only have nine hundred and eighty-one surveys that came back, so I really hope that we do send a paper survey home so we can maybe get a larger response. Considering we have over eleven thousand students, and everybody's talking about the election in April, we have forty thousand voters registered in our district. So I think a larger sample is necessary. But one of the things that disheartens me also is that under the teachers' section, "Improve morale" was on there. We shouldn't have teachers that have low morale. I'm not exactly sure why that is, but I think that's something that we need to have addressed right away. And also for the teachers to allow creativity. If they don't feel that they can be creative in the classroom, kids learn the best when they're creative. And they're telling me to wrap it up. But otherwise, just really quick, community engagement. You guys have, you guys have community engagement now. And when it comes to leadership, the one thing that stuck out was that we are one district. We have, the leadership is in this room. So whether you're running for the board, or whether you're administrator, you, we, or a parent, we're the leaders in this district, so we just need to stay engaged.
We have about five minutes left.
Good evening. My name is James Savala, and I'm a parent in the district. I have two children that attend Parker Road School. My concern is for the children. I noticed, and I heard previous, how students have conducted themselves with the concern of Dr. McCoy. From their perspective, what I see, they feel as though the board themselves have bullied Dr. McCoy off the board. We spoke about being bullies, and it's been taught, and I think that's a great program that's been taught through the Berkeley School, the Alternative Argumentative Writing Initiative, great class. The Bullying Process class, great class. I think those work very well. But the bullying process, this is what I've heard from my own children. You know, did they bully him off the board? It's a concern that I have, and my concern with that is that, did you, are you taking concern of that issue? Did you, have you put anything in place for our children? Majority of children, both black and white, miss Dr. McCoy. It's as though a teacher had passed and nothing's been done about it. A teacher had passed in the classroom, something would be done. And for them, it's the same process. They lost someone they belovedly loved, and they're questioning, you know, why is this board not doing anything about this? Is it an act of bullying? I know there may be personal issues going on, and I don't know all the whole ramification of all that. I do know that because you guys got rid of him. I know the ramification, you did what you did. But, you know, behind that, what are you doing for the children in this situation? They've lost someone truly that they belovedly care for, and they don't see anyone else taking this place. And from the board perspective, I see nothing but Caucasian men. And from the board perspective, I see nothing but Caucasian men and women. You know, you would think you were welcome with a community that, we've come together as a community, both black and white. We live well with each other in Flores, Ferguson-Floreson School District. A lot of minority children come to the school district. So be it. We've done well with it, but then we get the people who are supposed to be leading our community, the school board, haven't come up with this riff. You know, I heard understanding that the question was asked about him living outside of the district community, but a lot of principals do, a lot of teachers do, because we reach out for the best, and he is the best. He's the best that can be offered for this school board right now. There needs to be a change. There will be a change come April, but we need a change now. You all can turn this thing around, do the right thing, bring Dr. McCoy back, save face, and move in the right direction.
My name is Chris McClocke. I am a graduate of Ferguson-Floreson School District. I, I am a graduate of Ferguson-Floreson School District. I have a daughter that's in the fourth grade. I'm also an educator in another school district. As I look at the school board, some of the principals, some of the teachers, I tell a lot of people this, "I'm not going to waste no time, I don't be politically correct. If you ain't about these kids and their education and their success and victory, you need to step out the way and let other people that are do their thing." If you ain't about the success of these kids, step out the way. Be man enough, woman enough, to look at your heart and say, "I can't do it. I need to step aside and let somebody else who can do it." I'm tired of all of this with all these school districts. It's about these kids, not no amount of money we putting into a school district or taking It's about the success of these kids, and when they get older, will they be successful adults? Too many adults are playing with kids' lives, and I'm tired of it. You should be tired of it too. Look at your heart. Look inside your soul when you go home tonight. If you can't do it, step down and let somebody else, because today, it's time to stop playing games. And I don't play no games with nobody, especially adults.
Three, five, this will be our last speaker.
Also a former board member and taxpayer of the community. I'm not going to talk about Dr. McCoy tonight. Something else hit me tonight when I was sitting there, the debate over graduation. We're debating over $30,000 to spend for graduation, when the board just spent $10,000 on a consulting firm for something they've done themselves for years and years. They just hired a new lawyer, which I'm sure isn't free. The cost of the legal fees just for this process the last month, I'm sure when we see the check registry is going to be astronomical. For what we just spent, we want to keep it here. We also want to look at how much overtime it's going to cost us, how much rental of equipment, how much rental of chairs and all this stuff to keep it in district. $30,000 for something that is so important, a night for these young students, what we should be focusing on is very little money.
Go ahead, this will be our last speaker. Go ahead.
Is it okay? Thank you, thank you. Before I preference my remarks, before I preference my remarks, I noticed tonight that if an issue is on the agenda, you will respond to the, to the audience. But if the audience directs you in reference to the superintendent, you will not respond. And they are your constituents and the people that you represent also. So I don't understand why you would respond to someone in reference to something on the agenda, but you want to respond to the question in reference to the superintendent. And you're inconsistent. But let me go to my remarks. I attended the press conference of Dr. McCoy. He stated, see, I was under the impression, being in this a long time, that he was an at-will employee that you could terminate without cause. But I got a different understanding in his press conference. In his press conference, he stated that he did not know why he was put on administrative leave. According to The Sunshine, the person that voted no to put him on administrative, not to put him on administrative leave, why don't he stand up and tell the community, "Why did you vote no? You can do that, because you've already, after you vote, you can make a statement." So I guess we go back to the bullying. Is the remaining six preventing you from telling why you voted no? Can you respond to that? It's very simple. It's something that's preventing the person to not tell the community why he voted no, because the remaining six, for whatever reason, adds on. Initially, put him on administrative leave and said it was a different philosophical differences. But you concluded, two weeks after that, you went to Desi and said he had manipulated the daily attendance. So I guess this week, I guess he'd be a child molester, because you're creating as you go. See, see, the responsible board would have had all its ducks in order and said, "Dr. McCoy, you violated A, you violated B, you violated C, and because of that, we do no longer have confidence in you, and therefore, you're terminated." Do you know you are paying the school district? When I came here last time, you had more police officers here protecting whom I don't know than we had in all of the school district. That's Florson, Berkeley, Dalewood, we don't have as many police officers. Where y'all, are y'all paying these police officer out of our tax money?
Yeah.
I don't get it. So you need to do one of two things. You need to make a decision if you're going to terminate him, because certainly, if I was him, I wouldn't want to work for you. Because I've heard tonight that the superintendent truly do not run this district. If you intervene with the principals and the teachers and tell them what to do, this is a very difficult district to work in. And this district is that close. You know, I was a state ref for eight years. This district is that close to becoming unaccredited, that close. And according to your test scores and your administration, since they give you two years, at this point, if you do not change by next year, or the year no later than the next year, this will be an unaccredited school district. And if that's what you want, fine. But let's conclude that, let's be consistent and respect these people here. I ought to be able to ask you one thing, and I'm going to conclude. When will you make the decision? Right, well, when are you, can anybody say, "When will you make the decision? Are you going to deliberate after two meetings and conclude all your, and make a decision? Can you answer when you're going to make a decision? Yeah, is it possible? I mean, you were very good interrupting and asking all the teachers and all the administrators their presentation like you knew so much, but now you can't answer me, "When are you going to make a decision?" See? You don't need anything. All you need to say is, "Six people voted to terminate him," and we have to accept that. But come April, your day going to come.
Need a motion to go to an executive session? I need a motion to go to executive session. It moved by Mrs. Hoggshead and seconded by Mr. Ebert to adjourn to executive session. Mr. Shabot, would you call the roll?
Mr. Ebert, Mr. Brown, Mr. Schrader.
Aye.
Mrs. Hoggshead. Secretary votes aye, Mr. Martinez?
Nay.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
You're a mess, dude.
Thank you all for coming tonight.